Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order this evening and I would ask you all to join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and I would ask us all to now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now we will have Janelle Ewing read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much, Janelle. Now we will move on to Exhibit A, which is a cooperative sponsorship agreement, and this is for information only. No action will be taken, and we have Pam here that can explain that to us this evening.
Yeah, so this is just is a new sharing agreement with Waterloo Christian School for Boys Track. It's just allowing their students, since they don't have a track program, allowing their students to come in, excuse me, and participate at West High.
Perfect, and we've done this previously.
Yes.
Okay.
Do their girls do it, too?
Um, I don't know that their girls right now do it, but we would, if they had girls that wanted to participate, we would allow them to come in. Yep, yep. So it's based on a, excuse me, on a, like, a as-needed basis.
Got ya. Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Okay. Any other questions for Pam? All right, that's great. We will see some of their student athletes participating with us, we hope. And next up is Item B, which is on Page Two, and it is the City of Waterloo's 2030 Vision and Strategic Plan. And Dr. Smith will be the contact on that, and I also see we have Mayor Hart here this evening, and he will be coming up to the podium.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for your time. Okay, you got a fancy. I'm just in the little city council chambers, and so, I don't know. But I just want to say first and foremost, thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank you so much for all of your efforts. I understand so much how it is to be a public servant. The pay may not always be great, but the reward and accomplishments is incredibly, incredibly great. So, to everyone here, my name is Quentin Hart. I am mayor for the City of Waterloo, and I was having a conversation with Dr. Smith about, um, okay, okay, all right, thank you, having a conversation about just Waterloo in general and hearing about the incredible work that all of you are doing, but also hearing about the work that we're doing as a city. And in 2021, we embarked on a pretty, pretty aggressive strategic planning session because we wanted to make sure that we'd just gone through the pandemic, and we wanted to make sure that we come out of the pandemic forged ahead and moving in a direction that's going to move Waterloo to 2030. And so we created the 2030 Vision Plan, and through that Vision Plan, we hired De novo, and De novo, we started out with stakeholder meetings. We had a kickoff. We did interviews, and if you can see in parentheses, it says "so many interviews." We had meetings, we had council, neighborhood associations, we had affiliate groups, we had nonprofits. We did a community survey, and we did a Spark event where we were at the amphitheater, and we had an opportunity to work with about 10 people to talk about big ideas that they would like to see come to the City of Waterloo. And one that was really cool is "Make Waterloo Skate Again," and just cool ideas to see what we can do as a community. Before we say there's no money for it, but what can we do as a community? And so that was our kickoff event. And then after that, guess what, Aster, Mr. Williams? More meetings, right, and more meetings. And then we did tours and stakeholder meeting number two. And from that, all of those meetings and those conversations, we developed the mission statement, and that is Waterloo is a community of opportunity where everyone can prosper. And that's so important because my parents came in the early '60s because they wanted to escape the turbulent times down south. And my uncle called my dad and said, hey, come on up to Waterloo because there is work. And he came up to Waterloo after the service. And my mother, who had a different path, came up here because her mother brought her brothers and her sister here to be in Waterloo. And so Waterloo was always that place that people could come to have opportunity, and have opportunity where everyone can prosper. And we took a look at this plan in three areas. One is equity, and that is a reminder to everyone that equity does not necessarily mean equality. Equality is giving people the same exact thing, but equity is giving people exactly what they need to have a community of opportunity. We took a look at the economic development lens because you want to have a thriving community that is very business savvy, business oriented, and that everyone can move up the economic chain. And number three is sustainability, to make sure that whatever we do, it will continue to move on from 2030 and beyond. And so our focus and prioritization came up with eight big ideas in eight years. And as you know with anything with strategic planning, not just internally, but when it involves the community, there are a lot of steps that are involved. And some of these buckets we're moving towards, and some of the other buckets, we are working to put strategy groups together in the near future. But those eight are Flying the W, Elevate Housing, Celebrating and Connecting Neighborhoods, Waterloo Works, Crossroads Double Down, Power Up Downtown, Sportstown USA, and Community of Opportunity. And I am reading fast so I can meet my five-to-eight-minute mark. And number one is Flying the W. From some of you that have been here and working in the educational system, you know, just like I know, that sometimes a city gets a bad rap. We can have theme parks, we can host 800 people in downtown about a week and a half ago with no incident, and we can have a convention center, we can have an incredible career center, but there's always that twinge, a little bit of some not-so-positive news about our city. And so the community in this number one believes that it is time out for us not to be able to tell our story. And if you see the W, you see it's similar to Cubs if you're a baseball fan, and that is to highlight our wins and our successes. And we're taking an aggressive stand in that area. Number two is to elevate housing. For many years, we've seen areas within our community that's had a little bit disinvestment, some areas that need to be brought up and have some equitable types of practice and investments made to be able to bring those areas up to where people can have the quality of life that they need and deserve. So number two is elevating housing, and that is creative concept and ways that we can continue to do the work of housing and neighborhood building. Number three is celebrating and connecting neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are so incredibly unique. We have very diverse neighborhoods that have stories that have not been told. But this is the work to be able to establish and bring back community pride in our neighborhoods, to make safe neighborhoods, to have interconnected neighborhoods, whether it's bike trails, whether it's walking trails, whether it's putting in physical amenities to be able to exercise and play and do different things, but it's remembering our incredible culture within our communities. And number four is going to be near and dear to all of you, and that is Waterloo Works. Our goal, the community's goal in this, is to make sure that our community has one of the most educated workforces in the entire Midwest, and that comes from apprenticeship programs, that comes from the continuous work that you're doing at the Career Center, that comes from most types of credentialing that's going to help propel people to the next level. So it may be an apprenticeship program, it may be an AA, it may be a BA, it may be several different ways, but the community said that we want our community to have the most educated workforce in the entire Midwest. Number five is Crossroads Double Down. If you take a look at the crossroads area, you see an incredible new theme park, the number-two water park in the entire world. You take a look and you see the casino, and you see the KOA campground, a development that's going there for a senior facility. You see housing, you see retail along that La Porte Road corridor. And as you remember, we just received a $20.5 million DOT grant to improve La Porte Road all the way up to Hess Road, which I think will end up being La Porte Road. But when you take a look at the Shell, the Crossroads Mall, that mall is deteriorating and not in good shape. So we're going to bring stakeholders together and a myriad of different people and investors to see what we can do to add and make this a better destination, whether it's retail, whether it's recreational. We need to make sure we take a comprehensive look to that area so that it can continue to be a destination, which is on the track being. Number six is Power Up Downtown. If you've driven downtown, you've seen the lights and all the things that we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that we continue to have businesses that thrive. There are thousands of people are living in our downtown. I don't know how many people know that, but thousands of people are living in our downtown, and we have incredible momentum moving in that direction. And powering up downtown is how can we light up downtown a little bit better so that we can have lights in various places, so that we can make it a more outstanding place, that we can attract more retail businesses and restaurants to our downtown. And part of it is conversations about sports arenas. But what can we do collectively to continue to power up our downtown and move us in the incredible direction that we're moving? Number seven is Sportstown USA, and I don't have to tell some of you the history that this community has had overall with sports, from Dan Gable to my class of '89 that had the undefeated footballs. Now, I'm just playing, but we did go undefeated during the regular season, at least. But how can we tap into the sports history and legacy that we currently have? How can we bring those things together to kind of rekindle that? How can we partner to help Waterloo Community Schools? How can we have the most pickleball courts in the entire state? How can we utilize our parks to be better anchors for helping young people to have amenities where they could get outside and off of the Xbox, to get out in the parks and start to play with one another like we used to do back in the day? But Sportstown is how are we going to recreate that activity? If you take a look at it, we have an incredible hockey team, we have the Waterloo Bucks baseball team, we have the Sportsplex, we have so many amenities that we need to tap into, and new amenities that we need to have here to bring back that Sportstown USA theme. And last but not least, Waterloo is a community of opportunity for all, which I mentioned before, and that's making us a more interconnected community. You remember the pandemic, when you had to give out, I don't know how many hotspots to young people so that they can learn at home? But how do we bring world-class fiber to every child, every family in this community? How do we work with our transportation, met transit, and our transportation system to make sure that you can get anywhere you need to be within this community? How do we make sure that those parents that need daycare services, that we can have affordable, quality daycare? How do we eliminate barriers to employment, whether you made a mistake 25 years ago by getting in trouble, but you can't even get an interview today? But how do we make this a true community of opportunity, like I spoke before about my parents and about your parents and about why you came to this community? And so I believe that all of this can be done in eight years. But I do believe that whatever happens, it's going to take all of us with one mindset, moving collectively together to make this happen. And so some of these areas, we've started on, some of them we need to bring folks together over the course of this winter and this spring, but there's nothing that we can't accomplish if we work together. So that is our community of opportunity. That's the 2030 Vision Plan that our stakeholders and our community members indicated they want some prioritization on, and that is exactly the direction that we are trying to move. So Dr. Jared, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. School Board, all of our academic scholars and leaders, thank you so much for this opportunity to present that quickly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any quick questions that I can't answer?
Yeah. Have you identified intersection points with Waterloo Community School District for any or all of these eight objectives?
Right now, right now, not. You know, there's some things that already exist. If you ride past Williston Field, if you ride past Francis Grouse, if you ride past some of those areas, the partnership that we've had on housing has absolutely worked. And I think, I think we had talked about maybe coming back and doing a presentation. So Waterloo Schools, you're in here, but as far as like, number, I think it's number four with Waterloo Works, we have not had a conversation yet. So we're looking forward to engaging, and that's part of the reason why I'm here today, to let you know first, but then over the next several months, we'll take a deep dive look at some of these areas.
Thank you, Mayor.
Who was in the focus groups? I've had people ask me that.
Oh, my gosh. I don't even remember. I don't even remember. I know we had, we probably had about 25, 30 people in the first. We met with neighborhood groups, we met, you know, we felt we weren't having enough minority participation, so we put together a group of stakeholders and folks that were there. And I didn't get any demographic information on the surveys either. So honestly, I really can't remember right now, but I can get you that information if you need it. But yeah, we-
Yeah, I just wondered because, just who was included, how it was divided, and who got what.
Yeah, I don't even remember, honestly. So I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions, comments for Mayor Hart?
No, I just, I wanted to thank you for, not just bringing this, but for doing the work as a now third, fourth generation, whatever Waterloo in. You know, we know what it was like, you know, when we were kids and what the image was. And I feel like we're doing so much to change it, and you guys are doing so much to change it, and everybody lives here. I don't think that it's a, I don't think it applies anymore. And so I'm excited. Driving past crossroads makes my heart hurt, so, and watching all the businesses go to Cedar Falls, the stores, like, if we can, if we can revitalize that area, man, it would be amazing.
Well, we're gonna get better ones.
Yeah, there you go.
But we, you know, what people don't really understand, too, so I just, I recently moved, and the house that I moved from, that was purchased by Cedar Falls family, and the house across the street was purchased. So those stories aren't told. We really only hear about flight away from here, but we never hear about those stories because it's just not broadcasted. But just really quickly, I'm sorry. There is one thing that someone has said a little while ago, and this is, this is to give you a caption of what some of the things that's happened. It said, "Well, somebody told me that the only thing in downtown Waterloo are bars." Now, don't get me wrong, I patronize, right? I'll patronize. But when people generalize and minimize, you forget that we have three of the best, three of the best museums and most unique museums in the entire state Midwest, from our Center for Arts that has the largest Haitian art collection in North America, to the Sullivan War Museum, to the Dan Gable Wrestling Museum, to the entire Grouse Museum District. When you say that Waterloo has nothing but bars, you miss the fact that we have over 40 to 50 various restaurants in our downtown. When they make those comments, then you forget that we have Young Arena, we have the Convention Center, we have the Sportsplex, you know, we have our governmental district where you have county offices, city offices, and you have nice restaurants, and you do have bars and activities. You've got Lincoln Park, which was one of the most used parks in the entire Cedar Valley. You have Irish Fest, you have Pride Fest, you have Friday Lou. You have so many different things, but when people minimize who we are, what we are, that's the reason why we need to fly that W so we can tell. And all those folks that came last week, there were some folks that were like, oh, my gosh, I was never gonna come here again. But now, you know, thank God, they're sending letters saying, I had an incredible time, I can't wait to come back. And so these transformational opportunities to allow us, yeah, we got problems and challenges, right? No doubt about it, but so does everyone else. But those aren't the things that we lead with. We're going to lead with what makes us an incredible community. So, Mrs. Mills, thank you so much. Well-taken. So-
Add to your list of downtown businesses, law firms, architecture firms, childcare, it is so not just bars.
Teach, teach, amen. So, you know, but, but, like, and we have one of the largest downtown areas, you know, Tech Works, I forgot about Tech Works.
And don't forget our small businesses.
Hotel, small businesses.
Clothing stores.
I got one.
Library, come on, that's my library.
Library, yeah.
Library, yes.
You see what I'm saying? But people will say, oh, there's nothing down there. Yes, there is. There's diversity. You know, one of the very few communities in the state where you can go along two-block radius and five or six African-American minority businesses. So we have a lot to be grateful for. So we insulate those things that we're grateful for, and we work to get the other stuff we need. So-
We just have to find more cheerleaders, like all of us, and you and your staff, and we all have to become cheerleaders of Waterloo.
Look at the Career Center. I go anywhere across the entire United States and beyond, and I brag about Waterloo Community Schools. We're second to none, and so that mentality is the one that we need to continue to push humbly. But, man, let's raise that W together. So I wish I had one, but I don't.
You should sell them. Marketing piece.
Okay. And just think, and look, there's gonna be a new W. There'll be a new W coming soon.
Perfect. We'll put one out here, out of the admin building.
All right.
At the Career Center, too.
All right. We got, right there, you got the American flag, you got the state flag, and then you got the W.
Right.
Now, let me go. I'm making you guys digress. I know you got serious work to do, but I just want to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your work, Mayor.
And thank you for Champion for Waterloo.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Do I turn this off, Pam?
That should die down.
All right, I'm gone.
Thank you again. Our next item on our agenda tonight is information from individuals and delegations. So looking across the crowd, I just want to make sure, before I read our caveat, that there is anyone here that would like to address the board on agenda topic or a non-agenda topic? Okay, well, on to then, our next item on Page Three, Item C is a consent agenda. And I do need to remind us all tonight that we do not have Anthony here to answer any questions, so pulling that might, you know, not provide us the answers we want, and we could email the questions to Anthony if we had some. So, but it consists of four items tonight. Item C is the minutes of the September 26-22 regular board meeting. Item D is the personnel appointments and adjustments. Item E is the bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. And item F, board member travel. Is there any items that board members would like to have removed tonight? Wow, this is, this is great. This is a first. So can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda items, Item C, D, E, and F as read?
So moved.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Awesome. Next, we will move on to Item G on Page 18, and that is the 2324 High School Program of Studies. And I will get to the motion here. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the 2324 High School Program of Studies course catalog.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, we have the infamous Sharice Ortmann here.
Hello, board. You had enough of me yet this year?
Never.
I'll tell you what, let's keep this pride going. I love that, I love that launch. Let's do this. Okay. So I also have Jeff Frost here to field any wonders you have about the Waterloo Career Center courses, and of course, Dr. Mohorn. And I will just give you a quick background. Since Dr. Smith is new, we'll go through the revision of the High School Program of Studies. It's always brought to the board for review and approval, and it reflects the transformative changes and the continuous improvement journey of our high school programming. It's used as a reference tool for scheduling students into appropriate courses and programs, informs our students, parents, and our community members about courses, curriculum, policy, et cetera, and provides transitional information for students moving from middle to high school. Our goal has been to approve the Program of Studies early to ensure a timeline of modifications, dissemination, and communication. The Program of Studies reflects the work of several departments within Ed Services, our innovative teachers, administrators. The comprehensive document mirrors our wide range of diverse learners through balanced and opportunity-based courses. And please note, this is just the conceptual nature of our Program of Studies. There are times where we might make small changes. I feel that I'm pretty up to speed on the SCED codes, but just in case we need to do any of those adjustments, as well as the region's admission index, I took time over the summer to make sure we were up to par, but we still might add a couple here or there. We also might make slight adjustments, slight, are you hearing me, Jeffrey, to the WCC? I always remind them every year, I'm like, oh, another one, which is wonderful. But we try to get everything ahead of time. We do have the parent night coming up for eighth grade four-year planning, and we want to make sure that everybody really has an understanding of the courses and the summaries, if they are college courses, and helping build that pathway for our students when they fill out the four-year and then they start planning already for next year at the high school by February. So we always want to make sure that we have this approved early. And you can see down there, this year is not going to be a lot of change. 2024 will include a lot more with the addition to the WCC. But at this time, you can see the additions at the Waterloo Career Center. Hopefully you had a chance to glance at those. Anything that we are removing, and as you can see, the hospitality and tourism pathway, those became concurrent options. They were general. And then we also moved a course to the general content that was at the WCC to help build that pathway. Hospitality and Tourism Management will be added at East High School, which does, I would say, continue to ask us for some elective courses and then also those pathway courses. We really think that's gonna boost the enrollment by having the same instructor at East High teaching that course. And then there are a few courses deleted, and I put the reasons next to why they're deleted. I know there was conversation about trigonometry, so if you'd like to bring that up, I did email the board with some of those responses. And then any other general content area revisions, you can see on there. So the superintendent's recommendation is to approve the 2324 High School Program of Study and Course Catalog. What questions do you have tonight?
Does West have a pathway for the hospitality tourism management?
Well, we have Intro to Foods, but that particular course that's taught by Talia, she's part-time at East High already teaching the Intro to Foods, and then she's out at the Career Center teaching hospitality. So they were able to absorb her for another semester to teach that hospitality as a general at East High. But keep in mind, East and West students can go anywhere to take any courses, even though I always try- though I always try to build that at a campus so that we don't have to travel, we really do have an open, I would say, campus approach at this point.
Thank you.
I have a question for Jeff, real quick.
All suited up tonight.
It's picture day.
Picture day. Picture day. You have to hide the bald head with a tie.
Right. So with the audio, audio and video production classes, how many blocks are there, and how much interest do you have in those courses?
The audiovisual, there are.
Audio, video, yeah.
Four blocks in what's called digital interactive media. Actually, I think that the program name has changed, so Charisse always gives me a hard time about changes that come throughout the year here. What I always try to remind her is a lot of these changes, whether it's program names or course names, or tweaks that have to take place come from Hawkeye to us, and we have to stay up to par with what they're saying. So what used to be digital interactive media, and I don't know what it's called now, I should know the new name, but also our digital graphics, there are four blocks in each of those two programs. And you also asked enrollment, correct?
Yes, for, for those programs.
Sure, so in the, what I'd say, the digital graphics program, which is under Todd Kern's hospice, there's, he has solid numbers, he has really good numbers, that's our, one of our first two programs we brought in with nursing, it has always been pretty solid there. Our digital interactive media, which I don't know what the new name is, I should know that, but we've adjusted the name of the program per Hawkeye. That was basically audiovisual, and I think that's the one you're kind of gearing towards.
Yeah.
That, that program is like two that are pretty solid and two that are lowish, I would say, and so we're trying to build up, what we're really trying to do is work with Hawkeye to figure out how we can get what we feel are probably more apt courses at the Career Center for students that would drive enrollment at, at a higher rate. And in a lot of cases, you know, the programs, the courses that we give within programs are basically courses that are handed down to us from them, and we do negotiate, and we do work, and we try to create sequencing, and we're doing a lot better job of that with them. But I think some of those initial courses, especially when that program was rolled out four years ago, maybe were not, what I would say, maybe the best courses, and the reason I say that, I think they were kind of trending towards, I, I don't want to say, how do I say this, I gotta, I gotta be careful here, they're trending towards probably not being the, the next or latest iteration of what would be expected out in the field. So, you know, students kind of pick up on that, you know, they're very astute to what's out there, especially in the realm of digital and technical and, and things like that, and so they would come into the courses and they're like, well, you know, I can already do some of this stuff on my Chromebook even, and, you know. So we know there's tweaks that need to be made at the curriculum level, whether it's programming or within the curriculum, we're working with Hawkeye on that, on the credit side of things. Other things we're looking at, honestly, are some non-credit options within, and I, and I think, you know, the mayor mentioned credentialing and certification stuff, and I think that's really kind of, you know, there are certain programs that are honestly probably better for students on the non-credit side of Hawkeye, where they can get credentialed and certifications when they walk out and graduate, you know, our Diploma to Plan Vision. I, I think that's kind of something that, you know, some of these programs that you're talking about, Aster, are ones that maybe we need to move more towards the credentialing, whether it's like the Adobe Suite credential, which we have students that are passing that. But I, I, I think it's on us to, to really kind of help move that forward there and get better classes, or, and/or adjust what we teach, whether that's non-credit, non-college credit, or certification-driven programs.
The reason why I asked, and, and maybe with the combination of the graphic design pathway as well, just the uptick in social media and, and the audiovisual for careers, that's why I wanted to know the, the numbers, and, and, you know, do you get a lot of, a lot of interest from students?
So, I'll tell you this, the, the, so we have the curriculum, and we teach that, because we teach seventy-minute blocks over ninety days, we have sixty-three-hundred minutes of course time in a semester. A typical Hawkeye course might require thirty-six-hundred to four-thousand minutes, so we do have a lot of extra time built in for various things. That could be teaching something, you know, deeper dive into something that the curriculum calls for, or going off in other areas that maybe the curriculum doesn't call for. I can tell you in that realm specifically, it doesn't really call for a lot of stuff with like podcasts and recordings, you know, but our instructors has kind of taken the interest surveys of kids, and, you know, they really want to move towards digital recordings, towards podcasts, towards, you know, actual music involved with recording. And I can tell you, a lot of our students that are taking these classes now really want to kind of jump down that pathway of tying in the music and recording and the digital part of that, whether it's producing or recording themselves, and we have seen an uptick on that. In fact, I think it was two years ago, right when we were coming out of COVID, the Warriors' hockey team actually had our class do a, their, their video, their, their kickoff fight video preseason, and that's played before the games on, on the board at Young Arena. So we're starting to see more of that level of stuff, kind of taking capabilities that we have and what are supposed to be taught in the curriculum, kind of taking them to a, a, either a different level or a different tangent outside of, you know, they, they get the skill. We have to teach the learning outcomes, so we can't get the college credit for it, but we also have the ability to make adjustments and go deeper or farther, or adjust to the needs and wants of kids.
Yep, I like it, I agree. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, thanks.
I'm wondering about the cybersecurity classes, how, are they very popular, or as far as just the, the kids involved in it?
Absolutely. I, I mean, I think, you know, if you think back, like, I think to April, May, summer coming back, July, I think, you know, how many times Kyle's been here with his kids, and you can just see the passion and the excitement that those students have about this, and, and that has really trickled down to our high schools, and, and the reality is, it's a huge need area. I mean, students leaving the program with certifications in cyber can get hired right out of, out of high school if they're, have a high enough level of certification, so absolutely a high interest area, an interest of high need, and that's actually why we're bringing it in this year. We're actually taking Kyle's IT Web and Mobile program, and we're kind of just splitting it in half. He's going to continue to teach over a four-semester sequence, the cyber, or the Web and Mobile program, then, which would typically be taught over two semesters, but then we're driving the, the cyber piece, too, because that is such a high-need area, and basically, we're just splitting the program, and he's, he's really the leader of two different programs that are kind of distinct, because Web and Mobile is, is very unique in that area, but to really understand the cyber piece, you have to understand Cisco, and you have to understand server side, and you have to understand, you know, before you can defend a server, you have to know what a server is and how to do that, and that's totally out of the realm of Web and Mobile. So two distinct programs taught by the same instructor, but very high need, good, good enrollment, and, you know, just kids coming back from those events and stuff and doing well at state and national competitions has really driven that in, in the high schools, too.
So that one does, did, did you earn a certificate?
They do, and, but with that program, we're actually shifting, so, you know, Charisse says, Jeff, we can't have any changes. I can pull the recording up, and I hear you said, Jeff, we can't have changes here. I'm just kidding, we have this banter back and forth all the time. So the reality is, is we are actually driving, it's really credential-driven now, but we're working with Hawkeye. In fact, Kyle's working closely with Todd Bangen, who's their dean out there, or their chair of the department, on driving it more towards credit side. So Hawkeye's any unique, it's still really strange for me to understand. So if you go to any community college, they have literally two entities, they have credit side and non-credit side. Typically, the credit side is for concurrent, and the typical students may be graduating from high school and going out to get their AA, to continue on, or to take their AA and run. The other side of it is the adult education, adults coming back, which is more the certification-driven side. But what we've discovered is that the certification side and credential side is really an area that our students really need to be looking at, because that's getting our students the jobs and scholarships, and getting them to the next layers of where they need to get to. So we're working with both sides. You know, four years ago, we focused on just credit and credit only, and I know that was a, a big mission of kind of when we started, college credit and stuff like that, but Charisse and I have conversations all the time, not everything has to be for college credit. There are a lot of programs out there where if you get the credentialing, you're going to walk right into a, a quality pre-apprenticeship, a registered apprenticeship, and, you know, I think last year we sent eight students off to John Deere and other businesses because they were credentialed up. And I, I think it's definitely something we need to continue looking at is credentialed, non-credit, and the credit side of things. And actually, I have, I'm having conversations with the governor's office over the last month and a half on this thing alone, about trying to get supplemental waiting back on the credential side. So a lot of backstory to that, but honestly, it's something you probably need to be in the loop on anyway, when you start wondering like, well, jeez, we've, we've dropped like four credit classes, there'd be a reason for it. I mean, it's because our business partners, our industry partners are saying, you need to go towards this instead of taking that way, so.
So cyber, I know that's one of their last dollar scholar programs at Hawkeye, does this, is this different classes, does this, if they wanted to continue, would this launch them into that?
Absolutely, so what's really great about where they're at with that program, they can take the credentials and run.
Got you.
And go off to career, but now we're tying in the credit side with it, which is the best of both worlds.
Right.
You get the credentials and the credit, they can follow up right into Hawkeye, their new cybersecurity program, which is new, they just don't have an instructor, in fact, they're trying, I shouldn't say that, but they're trying to poach ours away, but we're hanging on to Kyle with, for all things there, but, the, once that program's up and running, those, our students would have the ability to take credentials and do what, what they want, or go onto Hawkeye and finish out at that program there.
Which is crazy, because like, my son just graduated from ISU with a M.A.S. degree, and he's like, I should go back and do the cybersecurity stuff, because it, that's how important and up-to-date when you're talking about how timely it is for universities can't, they can't keep up.
We have been, I gotta be careful, again, you know.
Just not be it.
You're not listening here. We, we, we know that colleges, doesn't matter if it's you and I, Hawkeye, Harvard, Yale, whatever, you have curriculum committees, you have to go through steps and processes. In most fields, that's great, because if you're making a change in psychology, history, this, that, whatever, that's not going to, you know, the history's probably not going to change a lot, maybe what you teach and how you teach it, but there are fields that if you wait eighteen months for a curricular change, by the time you get the change done, you're already behind again. So they're recognizing that, but it's not really their fault. There's something called NASEP, which is the, the governing body for colleges and universities. They have to follow their guidelines, so they don't get accredited, so it's, it's kind of a no-win situation for them also. So we just, you know, we're going to make the best, I always say this, we're going to make the best decision that's best for our students moving forward, to get them to where they want to be when they graduate in May of whatever year that may be.
So when you speak of credential, non-credit, you're talking about non-Hawkeye credit?
Right.
Correct.
All right, so.
In some cases, I'm going to be, I'm going to, I'm going to come back to this, in some cases, because sometimes it may be non-credit credentials, but they're through Hawkeye's adult education, adult, but it's really applied to us, where we can use their national certification programs. I'll give you a prime example. Right now, we have the Ignite program we've had up and running for the last two years out at Tech Works. That is nationally recognized, Department of Defense, it's the highest level of rigor that is out there in, in industry, and that is a program that our students are taking out there, and they're walking out of there with no credit, college-wise, they get high school elective credit, they're walking out of there with high-level credentials that can get them hired right into John Deere or a lot of industries, right when they graduate from high school. It is a Hawkeye program on the adult credit side, but it's not for credit, it's a non-credit credential, but it's still through the Hawkeye domain.
So regarding the high school credits, particularly in some of these esoteric-type courses that are teaching what we think they need to know, is there an issue getting Carnegie Unit credits of any kind, getting that certified for high school credit?
Well, so Charisse talks about SCED coding and, and things like that, so what we actually do is we take non-credit or credential-type programs, and what we do is, we have a conversation, Charisse works her magic, finds a SCED code that would match it, align with it, and then we can give, and there's not a course in here that's taken that is not Carnegie courses for high school elective credit. There's not a course you'll find in that Program of Studies that doesn't get high school credit. We find the correct SCED code, align it to that. Now, if it has a G, it's general, which means it's not a college credit, but it still can be a credentialed class. Ignite would be a prime example, no college credit for it, but they're getting high-level credentials that are applicable when they graduate from high school. Literally, they can walk into a, a manufacturing business with those credentials and be hired on day one, skilled up, ready to start.
So I think I'm hearing we don't really have a problem somehow fitting whatever we want to teach, creating some elective and assigning a Carnegie Unit code.
Not at all. I think it's actually prudent in, in a lot of our cases, the trades especially, and things like that. And Charisse can, we can tag team this, because we talk about this all the time.
No, but you're right, the SCED code index is, you know, evolving all the time, so quite a few of them, you'll get a CTE, but that's a general elective credit, high school credit, absolutely. And then I always double-check the region's admission index for anything that would be a liberal arts pathway course, and those are always denoted in the Program of Studies, so they get that added feature if they're planning on going to the regions.
So you've got a lot of extra minutes. What did you say, sixty-three-hundred versus?
It depends, I mean, Charisse is the, the expert on the numbers, it's, it can be anywhere from thirty-six-hundred, thirty-two-hundred, up to, I've seen some four-thousand and above a little bit, but there's still a lot of extra time built into that. And one thing, and I should mention this, so I talk about supplemental waiting back from the state for college credit courses, the great thing, and Charisse can tell you this, if we would take a, a course, and we know it's right to make it a G, general, non-credit, we still get a point-seven-six return on it as a CTE course and don't have to pay tuition. We're going to go into some deep rabbit holes if we start talking supplemental waiting and point-seven-six CTEs, but it's not like it's the, turning a class into a general that's a CTE course, we still get money back from the state for supplemental waiting because it is a CTE course. She's the expert on that.
So in these extra minutes, in certain courses such as construction, is there any plan to, to have the content targeted enough to give a trigonometry, for example, credit?
So, so if you look at, I think I had sent that in the email, so Applied Geometry is bundled, so when you're talking about the amount of seat time, like, if it's a, if it's a Hawkeye class, we don't have to go into deep detail, but the SCED codes allows you to have so much time to teach that course, right? So as long as we're not twice as much time, because the Career Center, they're blocked courses, we're thoughtful about making sure we don't exceed it, because we'd get supplemental waiting for that, and we want to really honor the integrity of that course if taught at Hawkeye. But what we do then, and you can see that on page thirty-three, so what we do is, in that case, because the seat time doesn't require as much for some of those career, college courses, so construction safety is bundled with Intro to Res, which is also bundled with that Applied Geometry that has some applicable trigonometry skills that feed straight into that. So when they come up with that Applied Geometry, that's a general credit, so I have a SCED code system where you look at the summary, and there's definite trigonometry in that, but they would just get the, like, an elective math credit for it.
But it would be a math credit?
Yes, yes, they get an elective credit, they get a high school elective credit. They get a high school elective credit for that course.
Equivalent to like geometry, I mean, Sequence Algebra One, Geometry Algebra Two?
Yeah, it's a little different in that regard, Lyle, because it's not considered a liberal arts credit, so it has to be an elective math credit. So, kids have to get so many math credits to graduate, just have their general liberal arts. But they can take that one and that can be part of their elective math credit because it's a CTE and it's very, it's like a niche, it's a specific kind of math that goes with that, Intro to Res Construction, because you're learning how to do the math necessary to do the hands-on learning. So, yes, but you can get an elective math credit, and kids do. And that meets their graduation requirements for their elective math credit.
Be similar to a consumer math or something.
Correct. Consumer math is the same way.
But you still have to have how many, how many other non-elective math credits? Six?
Yeah.
And those have to be these other three courses?
And one has to be at least, like required for graduation is Algebra One. All kids have to have Algebra One. That's why the Sequence usually goes Algebra One, Geometry Algebra Two. And to be honest, most of our trig lives in Geometry in tenth grade, and usually for the state assessment, that's where we see the bulk of the questions, bulk nine to eleven, but it's about twenty-six percent of the questions on the ISAS actually come out of Geometry, which we have in the new adoption, there's a unit on that has trigonometry. And just FYI, last year when we started Illustrious Math, IM at the high school and we piloted, tenth-grade scores were the highest on the ISAS, as far as fewest not-yet proficient, proficient and advanced students with that Geometry, which is, has trigonometry in it.
Super.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna take one comment here. I do, I do see the AP US History going away with replacement of concurrent, I think that's a good move.
Yeah. Well, and we have IB World History, if a kid is really interested in pursuing the history, and we now have US History Two, eighteen-seventy-seven, and US History Since, eighteen-seventy-seven. So, those are concurrent courses that we offer, and they cover so much of the same content that we can't double up our college courses because it would be comparable.
Yeah, it makes sense, and you're guaranteed credit there versus AP, you're.
You are. You do get the history credit at Iowa, Iowa State and UNY.
Yep, and I think we just.
What's significant about eighteen-seventy-seven?
Pardon?
What's significant about eighteen-seventy-seven?
Change of the history.
End of, end of.
Reconstruction.
End of reconstruction.
Yeah.
End of reconstruction.
Okay. It is, it is significant.
Yeah.
Historical.
Yep.
Yep.
Another one, I just, I still, two things, I think we need to get, just not this one up this year, but some type of coding intro class back into the high schools, just for some requirements for the military academies that require that. We get, right now, we only offer it at Career Center, and you only need one course in that, I think that'd be good, and then at some point. And then, some pre-engineering, I still, want some pre-engineering at the high schools of some type.
Right. And don't forget, even though we have a list of about nine approved PSEO, which are UNY classes that our seniors are taking, kids can submit a request, and as long as it's not comparable to any of our other college courses, they can take those courses. So, when we get students who really are interested in a very specific pathway and we don't have those courses, they can take that at UNY their senior year.
Okay. Thank you. But that's, that's the thing, just the coding and the pre-engineering, so thank you. But like we did, it's history.
So, I like the layout too. I mean, just from aesthetics, I like the layout, I like that, the way that, the way that it hits the, the biggies right away, so it's seen, you know? So, you're going to do your, the eighth grade parent, or the eighth graders are gonna be doing their career, or they're looking at their four-year plan, right? Is it, okay.
Yep.
So, I'm, I'm still having parents tell me that their kids don't know about the Career Center, and I, I don't know where the disconnect is happening, so I don't, I don't know what you gotta do, guys, but make sure that, that they know what's available, I mean, it, it, it's a lot of people who still don't know.
And here's the thing, they're eighth graders, right? And so, we, we want them, and we, and there are trips that are planned, I'll share with the board, you probably haven't seen it, but it's the four-year timeline, and that's something that I work with, Steve Winters and Melissa now, Stagel at East High School, and Sue Little, Jeff Frost helps with that, Amy Schmidt now helps with that. So, it's the timeline of us rolling this out, like this is step one, approval tonight, or if we need any edits. And then, we take that through a series of those eighth-grade parent meetings. You can see where we either have kids who are having visits to the Career Center from the middle school, or we're having people from the Career Center or from the high school, whether it's band, whether it's AP, whether it's IB, whether it's JRTC, whatever it is, we have those people meeting with the eighth-grade students, and they come down and they share like little videos with kids, and they talk about various pathways. And also going out to the Career Center this year because they did a lot with like Career Inspire, and they're doing some other things to really spread the word on pathway development. And here's what we tell families, and maybe if they're listening, they can hear this, the ninth-grade year is the most important year to really get those courses in there. A lot of them are already sort of pre-populated, you can do a dropdown to do Advanced if you want for some of those integrated courses, if you plan to take more college courses. Or you can do just the standard, like if you're in this class now, you would probably be in this class next. And we tell families, just ninth grade is the most important because every year, and you can see in that timeline I'll send you, we meet, they meet during their common times, we have career coordinators come in, we do videos, kids come and talk to the ninth graders so they go back and reschedule for tenth, reschedule for eleventh. And part of that, twofold, Stacy, sometimes students will tell me, I don't even remember what I filled the four-year plan out. And we remind them, one year at a time, you want to see the big picture, but we also are gonna have significant changes for the 2024 adoption that the students now, who are filling out their four-year plan, won't even know some of these pathways we're gonna have by the time they're a junior. So, we really, if any parents are listening, focus on that first year, and there aren't a lot of electives at that time, but there's a few. And keep in mind that they meet, counselors meet every year, and we go back through this planning process.
And I, I do think it's good, I think that these are older kids that have said this. So, I think that it's just kind of building, you know, or, or they, or they're out, I had a parent, their daughter wants to do dental hygienist, and they didn't know about the, the Last Dollar Scholar one through Hawkeye, like, didn't connect that the, the healthcare stuff that they're doing at the Career Center can help move them there. So, it's just some of those things, I think, are still.
Which, that could be some of the counseling piece too, that we're.
One thing I can say is, this year's eighth graders were unique because they were fifth graders when COVID hit. We do a fifth grade, every, a fifth grader comes through for a tour experience, and they come back in eighth grade for a tour experience, so they, they probably haven't gotten that yet, depending on the building, and then they do a tenth-grade expo, or where they, the tenth grade come out there also. So, this year's eighth graders were the fifth-grade class that were getting ready to come out for their tours in April when COVID hit in March. So, I could see where, like, I haven't seen or been there, they probably haven't, and they, they won't get that until sometime this year as an eighth grader, so.
Good information.
But I would just say, being a parent and a former student, but when I attended UNY, I look at this, I have a digital media communications, all those classes are what I took at UNY. So, what awesome opportunities for our kids. I mean, that's what I paid to go to UNY for, long time ago. But, you know, and, and now we're getting those in tenth or eleventh grade, so I mean, the opportunities are unreal. But the only question I had was PE, you know, so many exemptions in PE, how many kids actually take PE? Because I think that's, you know, our society needs PE, and so how many kids are getting exemptions?
Yeah, we can find, I'll, I'll pull those numbers for you and send them to you. We do, we have some kids trending because they want to take more college courses, so they're PE exempt because they have a full schedule. And then, we tend to have, try to build in a seminar at the high schools so kids have a time to take a breath so they can, and, you know, very ambitious. We have so many of our juniors and seniors taking half or all college courses, this, this is remarkable. And don't forget, fly that W, over one-point-five million dollars last year in academic scholarships and transfer credits of our seniors. That's, that's something to be incredibly proud of.
For sure.
Do we have any alternate PE extracurricular, like time at the Forge Plax or?
We still have that as an option.
Bowling or whatever.
Yep, mm-hmm. Some kids are exempt because they're already in the sports, and that's in the Program of Studies under PE exemptions. If they're already in a sport, or if they're in a sport that is, I know just recently, there's a young lady who takes skating in Cedar Rapids, and so she just has to submit the time that she's going to be there, and that is a, sort of that waiver of PE time.
Awesome.
One last question.
Okay.
So, I often see this comment about a lot of our students don't know how to home ec. What I mean is, they don't have life skills. And so, a lot of parents will complain, like, they really need to bring it back, that just that basic knowledge of just living. Has that ever been a conversation, just to appease those who have asked?
They do get it in their middle school exploratory in seventh grade as part of their FCS unit. If you remember, we have six service areas in Iowa, and our middle school experience, six semesters aligns, aligns with the six service areas, one of which is Human Family and Consumer Science, it's part of the, the human services strand. At the high schools, they do have the opportunity to take it as an elective course at West with Carmen Ward, and now with Talia coming back being halftime at East, she's gonna have pieces of FCS. Now, is it like what I took where I learned sewing and cooking and things like that? I'm sure there's some cooking involved, I'm not sure about the sewing piece and things like that, but I know what you're talking about. Very useful skills, I mean, like consumer math and things like that.
Like how to do a checkbook.
Yeah, exactly.
At least know how much you have.
It sounds so bizarre, but.
But that's actually, I don't know if it's checkbook now, but yes, balancing your account. Financial literacy has been added to the state, and that's part of our C-three foundation, so there is a significant amount of time that is marked for that, for some of those just kind of budgeting. And that's also why we have economics and we have health. So, there are things where we want to have kids be overall prepared, not just always about a college pathway, but about life skills.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Any more questions for Sharice, sir, Jeff?
No, I just have a little, like, weird, I didn't quite understand why it's in here. Can I just show it to you and see? It's just a, I don't know if it's like a typo or what.
It might be.
Okay.
We're editing tomorrow morning.
Okay, well, then I won't worry about it, you'll see it.
Okay, okay.
All right. So, all in favor of approving the twenty-three, twenty-four Program of Studies? Please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries, seven-zero. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kudos to Sharice. She puts hours and hours and hours, hours and hours on this.
It matters. Look at everything we have for our kids. It matters.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda, then, we will go to the item H on page twenty, which is the LEA Certified Annual Reports. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education place on file the Certified Annual Report, the Special Education Supplement, and the Annual Transportation Report as required by the Iowa Department of Education.
Similar, second.
And we have Mr. Michael Kaufman here to tell us about all of this wonderful information.
Just a couple comments before I start, is I'm never used to being on page twenty. I'm usually back sixty or eighty or whatever, and it's dark outside. And I, and I do want to say that the business office is just as excited about these numbers as the excitement you just witnessed, but we don't talk that fast. So, this'll be a little slower.
We're not gonna give you five minutes, we'll give you ten, shoot.
I just wanted to point out the actual exhibit because this gives you the narrative on page twenty, a whole cycle of, it's actually about a year and a half cycle that the business office goes through with all the finances. And just to kind of get to where we're at, number one is the Aid and Levy worksheet, which is state aid and property tax levy. That's how, that's where those are figured out, and we do that in January and February. And then, kind of finalize it in the budget estimate once the legislative group comes up with their state supplemental aid or allowable growth that you're used to hearing every year and that the governor fin, finally approves. And then, we do that in March and publish it in the paper, and then in April, we certify the budget for the upcoming year. So, where we're at right now, that would have been where we were at last April, April in twenty-one. So, then we go through the school year, and as we get done, we have the reports to, to fill out, to show all of the financial activity of the district by the funds, by the programs, by the objects, as I've gone through many times. But what you have in this exhibit is the Certified Annual Report, or we call the CAR, the Special Ed Supplement or SES, and the Annual Transportation Report. These all come from the same file that we submit to the annual report, and it's, the same file is used because for many years, for many years ago, starting, it was all just hand-filled in and added and erased and re-erased and whatever. But even as we got into programs that would fill in our reports, these three were done separately. Well, somebody would do one of the reports and send it in, and then it would change, and then that would change the annual report. And so, over the last probably five years now, it all has to go in together. So, they all have to work, they all have to be approved, they all have to be certified at the same time. So, all of the numbers match as you go from one report to the next, which makes sense. So, those reports were due on September fifteenth, every year, which just, was a few weeks ago. And we have completed our audit, the field work, where they come and actually do all the testing and ask the questions, and they are ready to complete the audit, and, which includes the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which means there's a lot of exhibits that go along with just the audit reports. And those are being done, prepared right now for November to be presented to the Finance Committee, and then the Board will accept those at the first meeting in December, or the only meeting in December. So, we start from April the year before, and we don't finish that year until this upcoming December, so a year and a half. And five months later, we start all over again with the audit, or two months later, we're starting with the Aid and Levy worksheet. So, that's how this cycle continues from year after year. But I'm going to just hit a few of the highlights for you to look at in here so you can find them. As you've looked at this, it's a lot of numbers. And the first set of documents is the Certified Annual Report or the CAR, and as you look at all of the different types of reports, it's all broken out by the different funds that you've heard me talk about, talk about many times. The General Fund, Student Activity Management, PEPAL, SAVE, and you can go across and see all the different funds that are used. But on page twenty-four, on line forty-one, is the ending fund balance of all of the different funds. And what fund balance means, that it's not the actual cash in the bank, it's the, it's the value of our accounts after all of the money comes in that people still owe us for twenty-one, twenty-two. The biggest one is open enrollment and student, or special ed tuition, that's going back and forth right at the end of the year. And then, we pay the rest of our bills, which most of it is two months of teacher salaries because they get paid in July and August after June thirtieth. So, if you look at line forty-one, a lot. So if you look at line forty-one, along with all of the other funds, you see the ending fund balance. If the school ended to cease to exist on that day, that's the value of the district on that particular day. So the General Fund was just over thirty-five million and it started the year at twenty-nine million, so it did go up, increase from the year before. The next reports is the, are the detail of the revenue and all the accounts. And you can look into different areas on that, how they're divided up by local and state and federal. The other one that I wanted to look at was on page twenty-eight and that's the General Fund expenditures. And this is broken out a little more in detail where it's not just expenditures by different programs, it's broken out by salary benefits, purchase services, supplies, equipment, and so on. And you can kinda see how the expenses from the General Fund are broken out into different areas. One of the measurements that we normally look at is the instruction on page one, on line one on page twenty-eight. All the way over on the right-hand side, we spent over ninety-seven million on instruction. So that would be all the teacher salary, para salaries, supplies, computers that get charged to instruction. And then you can look down and find other areas to see how that's broken out. One, for instance, is line twenty-nine, Student Transportation. All the student transportation, regardless of whether it's activity routes, whether it's special ed transportation, whether it's home to school, five point six million is that we paid. So, and you can look through any area that may interest you on that. Another more compressed report is on twenty-nine and it's kind of a general breakdown of salaries, or not salaries, of revenues and expenses by each one of the, each one of the funds. So in the first column, General Fund, it again shows just a summary of all the revenue that came in. And on line twenty-one, it's saying we started with twenty-nine million. We got, we received a hundred and fifty-nine million. We spent on line thirty-seven, a hundred and fifty-three million. So our ending fund balance was thirty-five million. So if you've looked at a general, a basic financial summary, this will do that for each one of the funds, what we started with, what our revenues were and expenses and what the ending balance, ending fund balance will be. The other one I wanted to point out again, this year on page thirty-one, which will have an impact as we go into the next annual cycle, is that because of the abundant ESER money that came in as miscellaneous revenue, we exceeded the amount of miscellaneous revenue we can receive as it affects any cash reserve that we would have for property tax. So we have exceeded that limit by at the, on line fifteen, over two million dollars over that calculation. So when we do property tax askings next March and April, there will, there will be no cash reserve levy added because we won't be able to because of this formula. But the balances that we have kind of replace that. So it's not a concern, it's just an anomaly during this cycle of the ESER money coming in.
Is there carryover on that?
The carryover to start, the twenty-two, twenty-three year was a little over eighteen million of ESER money.
No, I mean the cash reserve, the over reserve, the two point three million. Is that factored in the next year?
No. It, it will take its own. We have to go by the, by the activity in any given year for the next year. It probably will not, there probably will not be any cash reserve the following year. It's probably gonna be into twenty-four or twenty-five before we're levying cash reserve again.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a summary of some of the things in the Certified Annual Report, but I did wanna just show you some of the things in the Special Ed or the SES Annual Report. There's some informational things that don't really show up in a lot of other areas. And starting on page thirty-four, the tuition out totals. We have a hundred and forty-three special ed students tuitioned out. And you can see the, the special ed costs and by level. So they're, whether they're level one, there are seventy-one level ones, thirty-nine level twos, and thirty-three level threes.
So tuitioned out, you mean they go?
They're going to another district for services, yes. And we paid out one point seven million dollars to other districts for special ed.
Does this include River Hills?
Yes. On page thirty-five, I just wanted to show that we're counting. In the middle of the page for last year was one thousand eight hundred and one students. They, they're, that's what showed up on the count. And we're waiting for that count this December first for next year's budget, or actually the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And the number on the bottom, the nineteen eighty, is how many students actually were served in the district. They came after the count date. But it's just like enrollment numbers for anything else, they have to be here on enrollment day before we get that. Yes, those, that's, that's the body times the weighting.
Typically, those students that go out, I mean obviously River Hills, but do we, how many do we have coming in? Do we have very many coming in?
Page thirty-six.
Oh, I'm jumping to a guy.
Yep, that's fine. So not near as many, eight level one, ten level two, and eighteen level three. So we received from other districts about eight hundred and thirty-one thousand. And years ago, it used to be whatever funding you got for a particular level, that's what you shared with the other district. That is not the case for several years now, it's actual cost. So if a level three or even a level two has a full-time nurse that has to be with them, we have to pay actual cost. So it's not just, so some, some students cost us more money than the, than the revenue we get. And just as a reference, on page thirty-seven, this is the total revenue that we get just from the count of the students. It's a little over thirty-one million dollars. So it's a major, it's a major fund by itself. Our special ed budget is, I know I looked at it a few years ago, it was higher than sixty or seventy percent of the districts in the state. So we have a major funding source just with our special ed program. Page thirty-eight is just some federal money that comes in. And thirty-nine shows the two million that we got in Medicaid reimbursement. Transportation costs for the three levels on page forty was just under one point two nine million dollars, one million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So that's a major expense as well, getting the kids delivered where they need to be and specialized funding as well. Then on forty-one and forty-two is really a summary of all of those components, of just showing all of the revenue on page forty-one of the different areas that we get revenue. And it's just a little over thirty-four million dollars. So you're including the thirty-one that comes from the count, you're including Medicaid, you're including tuition in. The teacher quality on that, about in the middle of the page, one point one six six, that's TSS money, the Teacher Salary Supplement, because they get that as a special education teacher. But we, we count it as a revenue of what we apply to that, but then it's taken away in the salary expense as well. But at least it shows that they're getting that and it's not going against using special ed funds. Page forty-two is the breakdown of salaries and benefits, supplies, transportation, tuition. Comes to a little over, it comes to over twenty-five million dollars, kind of in the upper mid-part of the report there. And then we have what's called General Program Percentage. And what that means is how much of a student's expense would be kind of applied to just being a regular student? The one point oh part of that student, because everybody is a one point oh student. So when you look at level one, four point three million is general expense, which means a lot of their cost would be similar to a regular one point oh student. And when you get to level two, that gets cut by less than half. And when you get to level three, then most of it of, of an eight million dollar cost for that right above it, only seven hundred thousand is general expense because most of it is specialized special ed expense. So there's six point six million of that and then our tuition out. So we had expenses of thirty-four million dollars as well. We almost broke even this year, we were just a hundred and nineteen thousand without going negative for the current budget. And then that summarized on page forty-three, where if you look at the middle number on the bottom section, this one point six six four seven seven five, that's the limit that we can carry over from one year to the next. And the current year coming, or last year's number on the left-hand column at the bottom was one point five seven three. So we were very close to having, to going overspent, where we would have had to spend money, send money back to the state. But we, we balanced within a hundred and nineteen thousand. So we stayed within our limit and are able to carry all of that forward. One of the few districts in the state that have a positive special ed balance. There are not many. And I know I've given you numbers before of some of the other U E N's and I can share that a little later, I don't have that list, but it's, there's some striking differences. The last report, I just wanted to, page forty-four talks about the miles traveled by the different bus routes and activities. Page eighty-five is the students and how far they're traveling, the ones that we're carrying. And page forty-six gets into the different expenses that are coming off of the CAR. You see that listed source, CAR. That's all of the numbers coming from our accounting. And then on page forty-eight, I just wanted to make note of the average cost unpaid, on line six, the average cost per mile was five dollars and fifty-five cents. The average cost per pupil is five hundred and sixty-eight for the year. And we've also got an adjustment for, we get reimbursed when we transport non-public students. And we are required to transport non-public students. They can elect out and say, we'll do it on our own. But then we reimburse the parents for the, the trips that they turn in. But we get extra funding for that. It doesn't just come out of our normal budget. We, we apply for that at, in the spring of the year when we know all of the, the students and parents that have done that. So without taking credit for that reimbursement, if you just added our cost, it would go from five fifty-five to six thirteen on line eleven and the average from five sixty-eight to six twenty-six for the year. It was, that number isn't on here. It was a little over five hundred thousand dollars that the district claimed as cost for transporting. And then we paid, and this is a very rough guess, about two hundred and some thousand to the parents. So we still netted over three hundred or close to three hundred thousand. So we weren't just picking up non-public kids without getting reimbursed for that. So I will make a, kind of a comment on the transportation part. And I'm just going to say from the experience of the pandemic and how crazy transportation was and how Durham was trying to meet those needs and we paid penalties for not having school and doubling up routes and trying to function without drivers. The information from Durham through three different supervisors has been kind of significantly different three years in a row. And without taking an enormous amount of time to re, re-track all of those steps, it's almost impossible to prove where, I worked with Max Christiansen a year ago 'cause he said, you changed a lot, and I said, I know. So we kinda worked through it, he understood what was going on. He said, let's wait and see what happens this year, I haven't heard from him yet this year. It's a little more in balance this year compared to previous years. But I just had a conversation... But I just had a conversation with Sarah Meyer, the new transportation manager today. And I brought her the September bill from Durham that's about this thick. And I said, I know you can't do it today, but you need to understand everything that's going on here, because I don't. Because, and, you know, we've had questions of how do you, how do you bill? And, and Stacy, I know you asked that a year ago and said, when, when we double route, how do they charge us? And that was a really good question. So that's something that, when I talked to Sarah about it today, she seemed to have a pretty good understanding of the verbal part of it, and is going to follow up on that and be more of a, a connected resource to our charges and the procedures, and exactly what we were looking for with that, and accountability with Durham from all of that. It's, it's terribly difficult for them to function under all of this. So it's just an issue that we all need to be on the same page of what's going on. So I think that will be a, a great resource for us to have a better understanding and be able to work with Durham a little bit closer, so.
Yeah, when they say the average number of students transported, I'm assuming they're referring to the number of eligible students, not the actual.
Yeah, because they're not counting every day, are they?
No.
Yep.
But I think that would be very helpful, just to see, because we have questioned, as you said, Stacy, and previously, just to, to, to see, you know, what actually, you know, even maybe a work session on that might be applicable just so that we can all understand too, you know, because kind of confusing. But in a lot of those lines, the Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement, has that stayed consistent? I know we were low, and then we kind of.
Yeah, we had a low year in, in the first year, the first year and a quarter with the pandemic and kids staying home and so on. And if my memory is correct, we dropped to about one point four, one point five million. And last year, I'm going last year, in twenty twenty-one, because we get confused between last year, next year, and this year when we're doing all of this. So twenty twenty-one, it got back up over one point eight, and now we're over two million. So we feel like it's kind of working its way back into the regular cycle. So that's good to see.
Yes, yes.
I just had two questions, and they're quick. You said, what's a non-public kid?
Private schools.
Thank you. And with enrollment numbers last year, what percentage are special needs?
Well, who can do the math? Eighteen hundred kids out of ten thousand.
Eighteen hundred, there you go. Thank you.
But so with the private school kids, you reimburse parents, or?
If they, if they do it themselves. They can put them on the bus, and we'll, and we will transport them. But if they'd rather do it themselves, there's a formula that it's not just your, your mileage, turn it in, and we'll, there's, there's parameters. If you're, if you're within this and this, we pay you a set amount.
Got you. Thank you.
Because if you look on the bills payable, when I first started, I've seen some friends of mine down there, and like, what are they getting paid for? And it was for reimbursement, so, yeah. Any other questions from Iowa? Thank you very much, and please spread the news back to your office that we truly appreciate Jeff and everybody in your department, because you kind of make this a little bit easier for us to understand. Obviously, there's formats, but we appreciate that, so. Okay, so all in favor of accepting the sort of, the reports for the Iowa Department of Ed, please state aye. Share votes aye, no opposed, motion carries seven zero. So that brings us on to our superintendent's reports, our action items are over. Go ahead, Dr. Smith.
Okay, I got a few things here. First of all, I attended my first ever Mayor's Fund Run last week. Lot of fun. I was gonna try to give him a little credit. He, you know, he really hypes it up. He does a good job there. He's hyping it up, hyping it up with the kids. So next, we've actually got the date set for next year as well, and just, I'm excited to, next year. I was hoping to participate this year, actually run in it, and maybe me, beat Mayor Hart, but but next year, I'm gonna give it a shot. So it was really cool, though, really cool event for our kids, beautiful day as well, so. Career Inspire was last week. I had a chance to go out both days, and it was a really cool event out at the Convention Center. The numbers that I got were fifteen hundred kids went through the, went through the different activities they had set up. There was two hundred and fifty volunteers, and there was fifty-two career strands that were covered. So it was a really cool event. I don't know if any of you had the chance to, to get out there, but it was a really, really cool thing that we're. Yeah, it was, it was, the, the kids were really hands-on, well-behaved. Huge credit to the, you know, Junior Achievement was the one. People were kind of confused. They thought maybe it was a Waterloo Schools event. We helped sponsor it. Obviously, we sent our kids there, but Junior Achievement was actually the one who ran it. So it was a really cool collaboration event. I'm super excited that, and I texted Madeline before the board meeting. We have an H B C U tour coming up at the end of October. Twenty-two students from East West and Expo are going, twenty-two combined students. And they're visiting, I mean, they're gonna be driving down, they're gonna be visiting Tennessee State, Fisk, Alabama A and M, Alabama State, and Tuskegee. So really, really cool event that we're super excited about. And like I said, Madeline Ridgeway, who used to work with us, is helping coordinate that. Currently, right now, we've got the Metro Sophomore Tournament going on over at the West High Gym. So it's, it, yeah, I'm just glad that we're, I'm glad they're able to get some, and I actually saw a little bit of excitement on social media about that, about them being able to, to be on their home court. Transportation, I was gonna comment on that. Well, first of all, I don't think it can be underestimated. First of all, again, I've told Michael this, like, to credit him with the, the financial shape that he's put us in. I feel really good that we're able to do some unique things. He's been able to support some of the ideas we came to him with already this year. And the fact that there's no special ed deficit, I think that cannot go underestimated. I mean, I've been in much smaller districts that have hundreds of thousands, if not millions-ish, in debt on that end, so.
This department needs donuts.
I can do that. I don't know, no, no, but when I go to Michael, he never takes them, so I don't know if I should.
Well, everybody else.
Everybody else will, all right. So, but I was gonna say was transportation. I feel good, you know, we just, thank you for approving the hire for Sarah this evening. I do feel like this is a level of oversight that we need at this point. I know Durham is short on drivers, but we've also, we've, there's just been some growing, some, well, growing pain is the right word, but some, some difficulties we've had this year, so. I do feel good, just so you're aware, we've got two different meetings coming up to kind of continue to look into the, some of the, how we can do things better. One's more of an internal meeting this week, and then there's an external meeting with Durham next week. I believe Lyle, I think you're gonna attend that one? I forget. I think we've maybe have a board member, maybe you can't come, but there's somebody else. And then we've also got two meetings lined up with potentially looking at some outside-the-box ideas for transporting students. One is with the Met, Met, the Metro, the public transportation. And then also another company locally, so I'm excited about that. We're gonna continue to, I mean, we're gonna continue to look at options. We're gonna talk about options, but we just want to make sure we can get our kids where they need to be, and offer all the opportunities transportation-wise.
We've used the public buses before, haven't we, given like, they have like a voucher or something the kids use?
They have in the past.
In the past.
We're gonna.
It's been a minute, but yeah.
We're gonna problem solve and continue to look at, for solutions. I just hate, I think all of us, Stephanie, Anthony, myself, Michael, we, anything that our kids want to be involved with, we do not want to, for that to be a barrier. And so we'll continue, and if that means us even looking at potentially some of our own transportation, I mean, that's a conversation to have. And then conferences this week. I know we've got important dates, but conferences are this week, tomorrow night, the first round, Thursday night. And then our teachers will get a much-needed conference comp day on Friday, so. Those are my updates.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll start tonight with Stacy, please.
I was just gonna do a real brief breakdown of kind of what we did in the Equity Committee meeting on Wednesday the fifth. So we spent part of it going through what a school improvement plan looks like, so that we, we all have an idea of how they look, and then how the criteria is set and how it's evaluated. And then especially so that we can see how it's focusing on equity and our achievement gap. And then a big part of it then was the Teach Waterloo update. And Dr. Mohorn, would you like to give a little bit of that? Because you, she's, she was like the scholar on this, so can you just give a little update of just some of the things that are going on with it, and some of the stuff we talked about?
Well, unfortunately, there have been some bumps in the road. Dawn Boone, who is the first Teach Waterloo graduate and who is now teaching at Lincoln, she just talked about some of the, the challenges that the program is facing now, and just wanting us all to know so that we could support in any way we can. And we're still looking to get Teach Waterloo applicants. I think they said they have space for like eight more people that, that could join. So if anybody's listening and interested in, contact our Human Resources Department, because it's a, I mean, it's a great program, and we net great teachers like Dawn and others at different buildings. So things we're gonna continue to work through to some of the little bumps.
And other than that, just get your kids to conferences. It's exciting, so. Thank you, Dr. Mohorn.
Thank you, Stacy. Jesse? Yeah, collaboratively, we can do lots.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate Sharice and Jeff coming tonight to talk about the our program of study, excuse me. I will always say eighth graders, even ninth graders, tenth graders, and eleventh graders, please take advantage of this. It's visually, it's a great layout, which Stacy mentioned, and it does make it very easy to be able to kind of have a plan in mind. I'm going home to sit down with my daughter to do this, because I know that she will be meeting with her counselor soon for her classes, but it's well-laid out, so thank you very much for making it easier for parents to have access.
I would say seventh graders, sixth grade parents, pull it up and look at it ahead of time, just start studying.
You're right, Mr. Knight.
Esther?
Just again, thanks Mayor Hart for coming. Also to Sharice and Jeff for all they do. I see there was quite a few changes in the course of study, so thanks to that. Happy to hear about the West High Gym being finally done. I did have an opportunity to talk to Dr. Pappas this week, so we got a couple of coaches concerned about some shot clocks. For those that don't know, Iowa has adopted shot clocks for women and men's basketball. So hopefully, we can get those in place. Got about a month before the season starts, so hopefully, we can get those in place as well. So just glad that those student athletes are able to utilize their facilities and, and heard about the volleyball tournament today too, so right on time, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Janelle, please.
I'd like to congratulate the East High and the West High Band Programs on their work this weekend. In Dubuque, at the state marching contest, the East High Band received an excellent rating, and the amount of work that it takes, both students and directors, to get to that point is absolutely a lot of work. Congratulations to the West High Band on their superior rating, and again, a lot of work for all of those students and all of those directors. And then the West High Band went to, from Dubuque to Des Moines to go to the Valley Contest, and they earned, out of ten bands in their class, they earned best drum major. So it was a really long weekend, and the parents did great and made everything really, really seamless and smooth for the students. I think these programs and other programs like athletics are great, especially as these students come out of the pandemic, forcing them to listen to instructions for the first time, forcing them to pay attention, forcing them to work on a team and think about someone other than just themselves. I think these programs are incredibly, incredibly necessary for bringing students back out of their pandemic mindset and into being community members and citizens. So thanks to the directors, Joelle Smith, Jason Dobbs, and Sally Lang for all the work that they did with the students.
Thank you. Lyle?
I just thought it was a good meeting. We had discussion on a lot of really important topics that, that the district depends on, so nothing further than that. Thanks.
Thank you, and just want to remind everyone that, again, there are the conferences, as Dr. Smith said, and Stacy, that get your kids, it's very important to find out now what you can get working on. You know, not right before the semester ends, but now. And our teachers are gonna get a little day off, so that will be nice too, after the start of the semester. Our next board meeting will be Monday, October twenty-fourth, right here in this meeting room, meeting room at five o'clock. So we hope to see you all then. And could I have an emotion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.